This is the Town of Sherburne zoning board of appeals. It's Tuesday night, March 5th, 2024. This is a continued deliberation session, not a public hearing on the Greenwood Homes project, Greenwood, four units. I'm Nick Novak, joined by board members Zach McBride and Todd Labby. Member Jonathan Fitch is not with us tonight. He did tell us ahead that he would not be able to attend. Because of that, I think we're going to limit some of our discussion and try to set, board members, I'd like to try to set a follow-up meeting for this coming Friday at 9:00 a.m.
That should be fine.
Agreed.
Hard stop at 10:30 for me.
Hard stop, very hard stop at 10:30 for me too. So if you're still talking, then you'll be talking to yourself. Jeannie, have you heard back from Jonathan on 9:00 a.m.?
I have, I have not.
Okay, but he did propose Friday, and I thought he said the earlier the better. So I'm cautiously optimistic we'll get that.
All right, so if you can just send me what you want the agenda to be, I will get it posted.
I would, I would say continued deliberations on Greenwood Street Homes. We're not taking on anything else. So just essentially the same as tonight.
Okay.
Jonathan did tell me that he had made all of our other meetings and he will watch the tape of this one. So this, so this one can be the one meeting he misses. Up to you two, how much we discussed tonight. There is one issue I think in particular, I want Jonathan's input on. As, as our sort of resident zoning litigator. With respect to prior items, but do you guys want to try to talk through some of the conditions that were requested on this? What, what, what would you like to try to cover tonight? I know we're trying to get to a decision. We need to make, we need to make our decision by March 15th, a week from Friday.
And when's the decision, what is the written decision?
It's something like 14 days after that or something like that. We have to decide and then we have to render a written decision. And I know, I know Zach that you already worked with town council on, on a form for that. So that's, that's a good one.
I guess my question is, what, I guess, what, what do you think is in play that we should discuss? Or I, or, or can we, can we, what, what do you think is out of play? I guess, Rick, with respect to Jonathan or in play tonight? I mean.
Well, I wouldn't say anything's out of play with respect to Jonathan, but I'd particularly like to hear Jonathan's view on our leeway on the room count issue. The Board of Health gave us a pretty strong recommendation how they wanted us to go. We had some preliminary discussions within our board that indicated, it sounds like every member had at least some level of discomfort with the way the rooms were counted. And there's a legal issue involved there. And I just wanted Jonathan to weigh in on, on what, what leeway we had. I'm a voter, I use terms like leeway, I'm sorry. But, but room to maneuver. I, I think we could easily talk tonight about, sort of, non-room count issues. I know that both of you and I think Jonathan had expressed reservations about the well offsets.
Yeah. Talk about that. I mean, I'm, I guess I'm prepared to talk about that in detail if you want to talk about that.
Please, please go right ahead.
So I just, yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely some waivers requested for domestic water supply setbacks. Given, you know, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what the precedent is for that. I know the mass housing, past mass housing letter suggested we focus on the disposal, the local disposal regulations. I'm not sure how the domestic water supply plays into that, but I do feel that given, you know, given the, I would say material, you know, attributes of the, of the locus, which I would say is that you have, you know, somewhat dense, you know, somewhat densely proposed dwelling units relative to the local regulations and the fact that there's wetlands, you know, in pretty close proximity, which would otherwise, you know, potentially, I think it's also a nitrogen loading, a nitrogen sensitivity zone. You know, I, I would not be inclined to waive the local regulations with respect to the domestic water supply setback. I think, you know, those are established, given the unique attributes of our, of our town, you know, high water table, well and septic, things of that nature. And I think the, the locus itself, you know, sort of reinforces the justification for the local regulations. It's not like we have a nice big flat field with no wetlands around. So I think that's, so that's my, I, I don't know that I would be inclined to give waivers to the domestic water supply.
Okay. And, and can I make sure I understand you? Cause it sounds like the, the waivers that are being asked for, that you're not comfortable with, are the offset of the domestic water supply wells from the leaching fields. And those are.
As well as driveway, you know, there's a bunch of offsets, right? So it's property line. The biggest concern from nitrogen and health and safety, I would say, is leaching field, distance to leaching field and tank, which I didn't, I didn't measure the, I didn't check the distance between the well to tank, but I did check from well to leaching field and at least, at least a center two units. I think, I think are, are not in compliance with local regs. And then also, you know, I would say proximity to the driveway, there seemed, there seemed to be an indication that distance to driveway was also, also requested, I would say, given the fact that it's, that none of the driveways are in a buffer zone. There's no conservation restrictions on the use of salt. Obviously we know road salt contaminates wells. So I would say that the, that the distance to the wells also in the driveway would be something I would not be inclined to give.
Okay. To septic.
Also the same reason, I would just say the same reason that the Board of Health denied my request for a waiver with the adequate protection to the well. I think, you know, you know, there's always the risk of, you know, a vehicle incident, you know, impact to the well, depending on where it's located. So that's another concern.
Yeah, got it. All right. And, and Mr. Labby, do you have feelings on the septic system well and driveway offsets that you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, I do. And they're, they're consistent with what I voiced, I think, in the last two meetings. So particularly the septic setbacks to up gradient and down gradient wells, the waivers that are being sought there are of grave concern to me. And also, as previously mentioned in the last meeting, the well setbacks versus driveways, roadways and arguably property line are also concerning. Seeing as how in this plot of land, you would have one market rate home. We're now having a rather high density of wells and septic systems sitting on top of one another. I think that there's a fair amount of risk there. And as Zachary mentioned, the driveway and the roadway setbacks are there, I think for, for good reason, not just materials that may be applied to the roads during inclement weather or seasonally, but also motor vehicle accidents, leaking of hydrocarbon fluids that are in all of these vehicles, even if someone were simply performing vehicle maintenance in their driveway, it becomes a concern. So those are, those are sensitivities. I think that the nitrogen loading and the setbacks to the septic systems are the ones that are of gravest concern because it's not a question of, will the septic systems be used? They certainly will. Whereas in a driveway, will oil be spilled on a driveway or will salt be applied to a driveway? Well, don't know.
We know someone is going to go in and flush a toilet at some point.
Guaranteed.
Okay. And just again, trying to get a sense of you guys. And again, nobody's, you know, made any final decisions. Would you, you know, our, our three outcomes on these things are always approve, approve with conditions or deny. Those are, those are, those are our three choices. Are you guys leaning towards deny or are you leaning towards trying to come up with conditions that we could say, well, you can do it, but you've got to change around X and Y and Z?
I, I guess I'm, I'm not entirely clear, Rick, on how prescriptive we can be and how prescriptive we're permitted to be in terms of conditions.
Well, sure. All right, let me, let me, let me take a shot at that. What we can't do is make up conditions that we wouldn't apply to a similar market rate project. Right? We can't, you can't discriminate against 40Bs. If there's something, you know, the stow, the, the classic stow situation is, there's, there's too much nitrogen loading or whatever, and it looks like the wells for either these projects or the neighbors are going to be in danger. And in that situation, a, a turn down was, 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 was upheld. In between those outcomes, you know, if you can say, well, you have to redesign the site to accommodate extra Y or Z, those are conditions. Now maybe they can't do that. This is a very tight site. On the other hand, they made it that way. They had 18 acres to, to deal with and they, they sliced off just, just about exactly four DEP acres for this site. And therefore, therefore it's extremely tight, but that's all self-inflicted. So I'm, I'm not sure how much we could do a conditional approval, but I think we are legally obliged, Todd, to try to if we can.
And that's why I'm asking, right? I'm, I'm trying to understand all of the avenues. Yes, that, that, that helps clarify. Thank you.
Sorry, Zach, Zach, you're muted.
Just as a practical matter, given to your point, Rick, the size of the locus, I'm not sure. And, and this is, this is, you know, I'm not sure what condition we could impose that would be, you know, realistically applicable, right? With respect to domestic water supply setbacks. I mean, I think if there was more, if there was more acreage to work with, that might be a possibility. But I feel like we're, you know, they've sort of jammed them in, so to speak, where they can. And they're seeking the setbacks because there's literally no other options. I mean, at least from what I can tell, I mean, so I'm not sure what, I'm not, it's a practical matter. I'm not sure what conditions we can impose. I mean, I think our hands are tied piece on the facts.
Right. Right. I mean, the, from, from a land development standpoint, this site works a lot easier if there are fewer units or they're much smaller.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking, you know, you know, just hypothetically, you know, if this were two duplexes that shared a well, right? That would, that, you know, I'm not saying that we're going to condition that, but like if that were, there were two stand, two freestanding buildings that, you know, in, in two, you know, two units shared one well or something like that, you might have, you know, more. I mean, that, that would, that would potentially provide, you know, a lot of value for a lot of different reasons. But I feel like that, you know, that's, that's like the only practical way you could get the wells in with the setbacks that are to local regs. Otherwise, you know, we have to, otherwise you're looking at the guidelines of Title V setbacks, which again, I don't think, given the unique attributes of this particular site, I don't think that those would, that would be the best course of action.
Yeah. And, and I'm not, I'm not sure, honestly, you know, I don't have the engineering file here to, to play around with the different variables. I'm not sure if it's the fact that we have the, the lots carved up into, into four lots for four homes or if it's the, the actual size of the footprint, that's going to be one of the limiting factors driving some of the setbacks. I'm not sure what the levers are to Zachary's point, Rick. And so I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense for what we can prescribe while being practical. Is that, is that a practical avenue or is it in essence, a denial, right? And, and I, I don't know if I have the ability to understand all of the possible permutations to accurately say if that's.
Right. Well, legally, the statute protects the applicant and fairly in my view, against a backhanded denial, which is dressed up in onerous conditions. There, the, the statute absolutely anticipates what we don't do, but what sometimes happens where the board is acting in good faith and saying, well, we really want to deny this. So we'll essentially dress that up as sure you're approved, but here you have to, well, you have to bring the moon closer to the earth. You have to turn the golden great bridge upside down. You have to do a whole bunch of other things and those are our conditions. Well, those are impossible. And, and the statute very fairly in my view, gives the applicant a, a remedy to go to, go to hack and have our invalid conditions thrown out. So that's sort of, go ahead.
I guess, no, I said, you know, I guess the question is, you know, you know, how material is 15 feet, you know, on a local reg versus, you know, what the reality is that, you know, I, I don't know that from a scientific perspective. I have to presume that the local regs are, you know, appropriate for our locality. And, you know, looking at the justification for the local regs, it's, it's often based on the fact that we have a lot of wet land, wetlands in Sherburne. And so given, given the proximity of wetlands to this site, I think that it militates towards the local regs being what we should require to be upheld.
Right. And, and I believe we are allowed to, to consider the totality of the impacts and the totality of the waivers. So that if this project were completely compliant and its only problem was that one well was too close to a driveway by 10 feet. I don't think we could legitimately either condition a change or, or turn down the project based solely on that.
Yeah.
But the problem is, is as you guys are articulating, we have completely maxed out nitrogen loading, possibly well overloaded nitrogen loading, maybe up to 37% above allowed levels. And the wells are too close to the septic system and the wells are too close to the road and the wells are too close to the driveways. I, I believe we are allowed to consider the totality of those impacts as opposed to just saying, well, each one's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I look at it as a creative risk. I'd like to describe it in my corporate practice, right? In, in individual risk in and of itself, to your point, it may not be fatal, but it, it accretes to the point of, you know, the cup spilled over. So I think, I think that, you know, we're, we're presented with that scenario. I'm not sure how we can resolve, I'm not sure how we can resolve enough of them through, through conditions. I guess that's just sort of speaking, thinking out loud, but that's sort of where I'm, where I'm at. Right.
Right. But it sounds like I'm hearing both of you correctly that to the extent that we could come up with a way to condition the project to survive, intellectually, you're on board with that. You just don't see that path yet.
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, I think if we can, if we can come up with conditions that, that, that reduce the risks that are presented, I think that that's fine. But I just, I'm not, I'm not seeing it as a practical matter, given the,
Yeah.
size of the locus. I just, I don't, I don't see it, but you know, maybe someone needs to give me a magnifying glass of it.
We, 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 we refer to problems often where if you pull it in here, it sticks out over there as hydraulic and that is literally the problem here. Right?
Yes. Yeah. And, and, and I, you know, I don't want to look at any of these concerns kind of isolated, right? I think that they have to be taken in totality. Sort of a holistic view of overall concerns and overall risks that we, that we perceive here.
Okay. Are there other matters you think we should touch on tonight as we're discussing this? Other than room count? That we, it would be useful for us to discuss so that John can look at it on tape before we speak on Friday?
I guess, what other point I'd like to discuss, I guess, and that is, that would be the, the mass housing letter where they did direct the applicant to, you know, I guess, engage, you know, to the extent possible, engage the municipality, discuss the project's ability to meet local wastewater standards. So I know that, you know, that the Board of Health's charge is to respond to Title V standards, but I, I know that the mass health letter directed the applicant to seek sort of look to achievement of local standards. So I wanted to sort of talk about that. And then also, you know, the, the point that the mass health letter also suggested that the applicant be prepared to dismiss, uh, discuss the cumulative impacts of the Washington Street project. And so I guess the, the threshold question I have or preliminary question, Rick, and this is more directly, I guess, to you and your experiences, you know, what, what weight does the mass health, excuse me, mass health, that's my own, that's my own forte. And so does the mass housing, mass housing letter, you know, what weight does that have, I guess, in, in our deliberations and, and, and this, and in this, the legal scheme that we are working in, right? Like their suggestion that the applicant do certain things and discuss certain things, how controlling is that?
Some, I guess, is what I'd say. First of all, I'll, I'll, I'll take my usual lawyerly hiding thing and say, I'm, I'm not town council. But.
In your non-legal opinion.
That's all, you don't have to let me off. Look, I've been stuck as, as DBA chair for a while. I'll do my best with it. Those letters are advisory and I think lawyers might call them precatory. They say things we want to see you do, things that are important to us. They are not commandments cast in stone. A town that says, ha, here's one thing that was in a, in, in an approval letter, a P E L, and they didn't do it, we're turning the project down. That's not going to work. However.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, however, but for example, here where the P E L specifically said, show the cumulative impacts and the applicant absolutely refused to do anything close to that. That's relevant. I think we're allowed to weigh that.
And then how, how does that letter inform the stow standard, I guess, as we are, you know, relying on that? So, so with respect to health and safety, you know, you know, how, how much can that flow into that analysis or, or consideration?
Unintended, of course. I don't think it affects the stow analysis at all. Because the stow analysis, I think is a, as my reading of it is pretty much a pure safety analysis. So if your town has a well offset distance that you think is important to health and safety and there's decent science showing that a violate, that, that setting that local regulation aside is going to be a safety concern, then under the stow case, maybe that local regulation will survive being pushed up against 40B. I don't think the project eligibility letter really fits into that.
Okay.
Analysis.
Okay.
But I'm not town council.
So I guess, back to the first point. I mean, I, I know that it says, you know, the applicant should, you know, should, they encourage the applicant to work with the municipality to, to meet local wastewater standards. I don't think that that is what we have here. I mean, and, and looks like they're applying to Title V standards that, that's.
Well, yeah, I, I, I think if, if the applicant were here, were here and speaking, they'd probably say, well, we tried to as much as we could and we met a lot of them and we didn't meet these that are on the list and we want them waived. I think that would be their position. And, you know, if the Board of Health were here and speaking and they're not either, they might say, eh, they can try very hard and they try. It's, it shows a very small site and it puts some very big buildings on it. And yeah, the fact that it didn't fit wasn't a surprise because they controlled all the inputs. Again, that's speculation.
At the end of the day, at the end of the day, our Board of Health can only apply Title V, correct?
Um, no, it's not. They, they applied Title V, but they also talked about the local requirements in their report to us on the fifth.
Right.
They talked about, here's a local requirement. Yeah. And I think the 150 is a local requirement, not a Title V. And they said local should be 150 and it's 108, 123, 127, 129. So I think, I think Board of Health did a good job of sort of walking us through where there was a gap between the local requirement and what's being provided here. And we'd asked them to do that. So those, that was useful.
And just for my own edification, as far as I recollect, and correct me if I'm wrong, there had not been an, an addressing or of the adjacent project in the materials or the meetings. Is that your recollection?
That, that is my recollection and it's, it's my quite specific recollection, although the tape speaks for itself, that we asked and invited particularly in, in the wastewater cumulative impact and developer and, and council specifically declined to do so. Having been reminded that it was in the project eligibility letter. So I think we're allowed to weigh that.
We're not allowed to condition requesting analysis on how that cumulative impact tallies out, but we're allowed to weigh that as a fact. Is that, is that true?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that would be an invalid condition. I'm not sure it would be a valid condition. It's, I think, I think it's a legitimate question for discussion.
So, so let's, let's go down that rabbit hole for a moment. If we were to condition an analysis on the cumulative effect of the adjacent project.
Yes.
What would we set as the threshold for, you know, what, what are, what's the threshold for approval, right? How do we describe what's, what's good and what's bad?
Right.
Just, just go, go do an analysis, right? That in and of itself isn't enough. So what do, what do we think that analysis would have to show?
To. Well, yeah, again, getting, getting to my earlier question, right? How prescriptive can we be? Right?
Right. Well, so I, I think for a, and again, I'm speculating here, I'm not town council, but I think for us to have a valid condition, it would have to be something that could objectively achieve as opposed to do, come back with something that makes us happy. That, 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 that's, that's too vague, that's too subjective. And we're also not allowed to delegate it off. Come back with something that makes the Conservation Commission happy. We're not allowed to do that either. But if we did say, show that the combined nitrate loading of all of the septic systems working all at the same time would be no more than 10 million parts per liter, if that's, if that's the right standard, the nitrate standard that cited in the regulations. We might be able to, that, that would be an objective standard. And that might very well be a valid condition. Because it's safety related. It's related to objective sta, standards in the statute and it ties directly back to the project eligibility letter, which told them to do it.
Now such analysis would then be subject to peer review as well?
Well, they'd probably put in theirs and then we'd have to decide whether they met the condition or not. Or they could just run off to hack the Housing Appeals Committee and say, that's an invalid condition, throw it out. I mean, there are a bunch of different ways this can go and I can't, I can't predict all those outcomes. Our job is just to stay within the statute as much as we can and but also try to protect the town.
From a, from a historic, from my own sort of self-education, I'm going to ask a question, I guess. And sort of pushback, Rick, I mean, it sounds like we, from, from the, again, the stow precedent, it sounds like a lot of the waivers that they're requesting, we don't have a whole lot of discretion to deny if they're not related to health and safety. Is that sort of a general, you know?
It, it, it is a general matter. If they're not related to health and safety, right? It's, for example, if we say, they say, one of the buildings, we'd say, we'd say there should be a 30-foot setback and they're saying, we're going to provide a 10-foot setback. And we're saying, that's a matter of health and safety. We're not getting it upheld there. In, in the case of the fields at Sherburne, in the initial design, they were putting a three-story wall, I think six feet from one guy's sideline. And his house was pretty tight in that sideline already. So, you know, he, he, that, that fellow moved to Sherburne to have peace and then a big yard and he was going to be looking up at, you know, the side of an apartment building. That probably would not have been upheld as a health and safety matter. That would just, I think, come under the category of very annoying things that can happen in a 40B.
Yeah.
Does that, does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah. So I mean, it feels like, you know, our, our deliberation focuses around, it just, just to, just to, you know, shorten this up. It sounds like, you know, we're. It's just just to, just to, you know, shorten this up. It sounds like, you know, we we're sort of. Forced in some way to give waivers to anything but. You know, help really Board of Health regulations, just just a grossly. Just a grossly, you know, throw a big, big hammer, right? And I mean, obviously, there could be other things, but. I'm just sort of, you know, generally saying. We should be.
I would. I I would say that in a town like Sherborne. Most of the valid reasons for turning down a forty B are going to relate to things like. Water availability. Septic availability. The septic not screwing up the water. Possibly traffic safety, things like that, but it's it's mostly going to be tho- those sorts of things.
Okay.
And tho- those are the items that were. Most concerned about, I think collectively here.
Right. Right. I- i- as as we talked about at the beginning and in all these, one one of the things we can't say as well, I don't like the impact on the schools. You know, that's that's too bad if people don't like the impact in schools. We can't do anything about that at this board.
And I would say, like, even it, you know, and from a conservation perspective, you know, our our fifty to one hundred outer buffer are different than a state. You know, fifty to one hundred, so is that, you know, uh, one of those where we just don't have a whole lot of room to deny unless we can directly relate it to a health and safety concern?
Correct. If 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 you you better be able to tie it to a health and safety concern. Because otherwise Hack will say. The overpowering regional need for affordable housing sweeps aside. The local desire to.
Yeah. Got it, um. So I guess, you know. Discussing the health and safety concerns, um, you know, assuming we could get a waiver on the. Proximity of the other project, we could, we could construct something that's, you know, enforceable and reasonable. I guess we're we're left with really, uh. Waste disposal and domestic water supply requested waivers, right? I mean, that's really where we're, our focus should be.
They 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 all, all of them, in my view, seem to relate to that issue. You know, size of the units, number of bedrooms, size of the septic system, where the septic systems are, where the wells are. You know. How how the whole hydrogeologic puzzle fits together. Did you want to say anything more, Zach, about the cumulative impact, or was your concern with cumulative impact that we ought to try to condition somehow so that the? Septic flows. When added up, all match or don't match or whatever.
I guess, are we allowed to take a negative? Uh, presumption as or as as due to the lack of addressing of the issue, you know, are we allowed to take a negative view?
I I think we're.
Versus an optimist, you know, sort of a pessimistic perspective versus an optimistic perspective that it's fine that he didn't address it.
Well. I think. Again, I'm not town council, but my instinct is the fact that they were specifically told to do that in the project eligibility letter. We reminded them during the open hearing. That they were to do it, and advised by council in the setting in the hearing, they still said, we're not going to do that. I think we are allowed to weigh that. I I do not think that if we did a straight turn down. Based on only that factor, that we would be upheld. Because I think Hack would say, okay, that was kind of annoying of the applicant to behave that way, but that's not. Clear proof of a health and safety problem.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, I think for me, the nexus with that that issue. Is that, you know, they're seeking waivers of local regulations, at least on domestic water supply. Um, and that, and and to a certain degree, it seems like. Maybe the septic systems, although maybe not, I have to dig into that a little bit more, um, but the domestic water supply. What's that?
Gotta speak.
Yeah, um, you know, I think. You know, any. To your point, any any absence of. Those other waivers, you know. It may not be material, but, um. You know, in consideration of the fact that. We are densifying. Relative to our local regs, I do think that that. Other projects. And the impact, the cumulative impact becomes more material. I guess, if we weren't done, if this project wasn't. Densifying relative to the local regs, I don't think that would be as material.
Yeah, okay. Todd, I see you nodding. Is this that you're kind of agreeing with what Zach's saying, or? You're just being polite and hate everything he says?
Uh, I I I would say that I'm agreeing with with what's being said here. Yeah.
Okay.
For for certain, the 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 cumulative impact, the fact that it was not addressed. Um, I'm I'm not going to presume that it's. For good reasons, for bad reasons, or whatever, the fact that we don't have that. But it is a fact. Uh. Certainly going to be more being discharged into the ground. Uh, it's not something that makes me feel better. Uh, makes me, it's it's certainly something that makes me feel more concerned. Uh. And I think if we look at all of the the issues that we're discussing this evening. Uh, you know, those those collectively have have me, um. A bit perplexed in terms of. How we could condition something here. Uh.
Yeah.
To to alleviate these concerns, uh. Room count notwithstanding, because of course we'll be discussing that later this week.
Right. Um, okay. Well, um. I wonder if maybe we might be most effective to continue to Friday at this point, unless you guys think there's other stuff. I see Zach nodding. Um. Cause I I I do want to keep moving ahead here, but I I think that the issue we need to discuss with Jonathan is is a is a biggie, in my view.
I I agree that. That is a. Significant concern.
Okay.
That's a very large one that we need to discuss. Yeah, uh, sh- short of, short of that, I think we'll simply be, uh, repetitive at this point.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to continue the deliberative session on, um, Greenwood Homes forty B. To Friday morning, February eighth, nine AM. By Zoom. But I wasn't making that as a motion, but I'll I'll I now rephrase that as a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any further discussion? All right, all in, all in favor, say aye. We do it by roll call. Novak votes aye.
Labby, aye.
McPride, aye.
Okay, so we're continued till next Friday, um, nine AM. This coming Friday, um. Okay. And I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Bush no adjourn.
Second. Um, any further debate? All in favor, say aye. Novak votes aye.
Labby, aye.
McPride, aye.
All right, everybody on the Zoom call, thank you all for tuning in. We'll see you Friday morning.
Thank you.